I'm showing seven even though the clock up there doesn't, should we begin?
Yeah, I have seven too. But I have seven as well.
Called the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board of October fifteenth for the city of Tarpon Springs to order. We have a roll call please.
Mr. Hesse. Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Coiner.
Here.
Mr. Terrapani.
Here.
Mr. Stavopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Ms. McCumber.
Here.
Alright, uh, we have a forum. As we move on to item two, approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve minutes?
I moved that they're, the approved is printed.
I'll second.
Do we need a roll call or just all in favor?
It can just be a voice vote if you'd like.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay now, can we have the quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers?
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at the hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Saying none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
Alright, I guess that brings us to item number four, that's application eighteen dash one oh three and eighteen dash one oh four. Conditional use and site plan approval. These are modifications of a previously approved conditional use and site plan resolution twenty seventeen dash forty-two uh, for a six hundred and ten unit mini warehouse in the Highway Business District located at thirty-eight nine thirty-two U.S. Highway nineteen north. Do we have a, a staff presentation?
Yes, we do. Um, good evening, everyone, Heather Earler for the sta- and staff on this application. Um, this is a modification of, of, to add essentially forty-six units to an existing, um, mini warehouse project that's currently under construction adjacent to the Los Mexicanos Restaurant. If you're aware of what's happening on Alt nineteen, they're currently in construction, they have all of their construction approvals. They have decided that they want to modify the large building in the middle of the project, um, which is listed as building one on your application. And they've also subsequent to their approval actually separated out, um, the back building into two separate buildings. So there, it's the same number of units instead of being one larger building at fourteen units, they just separated them and, and split the difference. One's nine and the other one's five, I think. Um, and so they have, uh, they yet received a parking variance originally when the project was approved. And subsequent to this change, they've not exceeded that parking variance, so they don't need any additional parking. So really, this modification is just involves not so much the square footage, but just how that square footage inside the existing building is going to be broken up. They're not adding additional height, they're not adding anything else additional to the building. So with that, I can answer any questions you, uh, that you might have, but this is really a very basic modification of the, uh, building one.
So it's just more smaller units in building one?
Correct. Any other questions? If you'd like to, the applicant is here, if you'd like to hear from the applicant.
Yes, would the applicant like to comment?
Good evening, uh, John Mueller, Landis Evans and Partners, one eight one one five, U.S. Highway forty-one North, number six hundred in Lutes, Florida. Um, I think Heather did a good summation there. There's absolutely no, uh, exterior changes to the site, no additional impervious. Uh, there, there was additional parking on the site that was in excess of what we would need, uh, per approved resolution for the, uh, for the variance and the parking. Um, and so we decided to go ahead and maximize the number of units within the building, and so it's just an interior modification to the building alone.
Any members of the board have questions for the applicant?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, so other than just trying to maximize, uh, the additional space for the parking that you didn't need, what was the, what was the reasoning for coming back to seek this, uh, new site plan, just solely that?
Uh, correct.
I mean, generally, you wouldn't do something like that mid-construction, so that's why I asked if there was a, if some, you know.
Well, we, we had decided actually prior to securing all the permits. When they decided to do this was about two days, I believe, before our, our original Planning and Zoning Board meeting. And we didn't want to stop and then have to go back through another month of T R C. We wanted to get the site under construction, and so we said, go ahead and get all, secure all our approvals and permits prior or at that point, based on what we had, and then come in and do this modification.
Understand.
And the modifications are we required because the resolution calls out that specific information, so when you change it, it has to be, it has to be modified. So that's really why they're here is to modify their resolution more than anything else.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions from the board?
Just the public.
We, yeah, we can hear from the public. I don't think we have any public, so, uh, I guess I would entertain a motion.
With acceptance of, uh, applicant, application for, uh, eighteen dash one oh four, three and one eighteen dash one oh four.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? Then, uh, can we?
Just for clarification, is the application, is the motion to approve the application one oh three and one oh four with the conditions as approved by staff?
Correct.
They were not read into the record, so I just wanted to clarify. So, um, there's an amendment of the motion that the motion is to approve applications eighteen one oh three and eighteen one oh four with the conditions as listed by staff.
Correct.
And is the second same to that motion?
Yep.
If there's no discussion, can we have a roll call then?
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stavopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapani?
Yes.
Mr. Coiner?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. Alright. Motion carries, that brings us to application eighteen dash one one two, Special Area Plan Transect Code Amendment. Appendix B Code of Ordinances amending the number of food service seats in the retail building function category on table four E and modifying the retail building function from limited to open in the S D C Transect District by amending table five A and five B. Uh, staff's gonna have to explain that.
Okay, so essentially what this is, is this is an amendment to the Special Area Transect Code. So the, that code for that area that is the CRA District and the Sponge Docks, there's a special master plan um, with several different types of transects which are actually zoning districts. So each one of those zoning districts within that transect has their own rules that apply. They're very different than the rules that are in the regular general zoning code. They still have setbacks and they still have, uh, a lot of the same criteria, but they have a more specialized way of presenting that material, and there's a lot more flexibility in the code for development. I'll give you an example, the setbacks instead of being minimums tend to be maximums. So instead of being, it must be fifteen feet from a property line, it's usually somewhere between zero and fifteen feet of the property line, okay? It's, it's just a different way of displaying, um, information and the requirements of that information are a little bit different. It provides for allowing more, um, intensity and density to be displayed on a property. So you ha- you allow for a higher density of use usually on most of these properties, which is very appropriate for places like the Sponge Docks, very appropriate for the downtown area where we're trying to create, okay, the air just turned on. We're trying to create that walkable community where buildings are up onto the sidewalk and you really have that interaction between both the pedestrian realm or the public realm and, um, the private realm. So the, the idea i- is more of building function and looking at that building's function and interaction with, um, both the private and public part of the, of a property rather than just looking at what is allowed and not allowed on a particular piece of property. It functions a little bit different, it's a very different zoning schema than what you're used to seeing in the land development code that just gives you a list of uses. And if you fit within that uses and you can fit within the setbacks, you can go. It's a little different, uh, here, that you still do have a use table that's involved, it just tends to be a much more broadly interpreted. So it wouldn't be specific retail uses, it would be retail as a use. So it opens up more flexibility for people who are coming into those areas that they may have a different idea of, of use. It's a more entrepreneurial, it, it promotes more entrepreneurship, um, and different mixing of zone, uh, of, of uses within a common zone. So with all of that, what essentially you have before you is the areas on this map that are shown in red. Those are the areas of the particular zoning district that we're talking about. The zoning district that we're talking about is this S D C, and S D stands for a special district. The code calls out those special districts because they are unique. Um, they must, they have some type of unique feature. In this particular district, the unique feature is its marine commercial, okay? That we're talking about that area that's on Island Drive. Um, the types of uses that are in there are Rusty Bellies, um, Gulf Star, uh, Charter is there. Um, this is just below here is where Turtle Cove Marina's, um, actual marina facility is, but their, um, community center is located actually in this district, uh, off of Roosevelt. So it's a very unique and, um, eclectic district. With that, what we're looking to do is we're looking to make a couple of different modifications. If you look in your backup, you'll see the ordinance front page, and if you turn to the second page, it's exhibit A one. The first table, which is for A, four E, little, little I. Under the retail section, we're making one simple change. We're changing from forty seats allowed for neighborhood, um, retail and, and food seating to forty-nine. And the reason why we're changing to forty-nine is forty-nine is the business occupancy under the building code. It is a very common area for when you're restricting retail uses, um, under that section. It's very common to have people want to maximize up to forty-nine seats and be consistent with what they're allowed under the building code, which is the, uh, which is an occupancy class that based on the number of, of actual people you can have in, in a space at any given time, okay? So we're looking to actually provide some kind of synergy here between what they're limiting the retail use in our land develop, our, our land development regulations to what's actually allowed in the Florida building regulations. So that's why you see this change from forty seats, which is what's currently allowed there, to forty-nine seats. So that's the first, the first component of this that we're looking to change. The second component on the next page that we're looking to change is within the S D C District, the use that's allowed here, so this building function table, which is this four E table, that's what this table is talking about. It's the bill, it's the function of the building, which you can actually use the building for, okay? Those types of functions, residential lodging, office, retail, industrial civic, okay? Those are further defined by each one of the zoning categories. So if you go over to the S D C, the Marine Industrial District, and you s- and you shoot down to the bottom of the page, under building function, you'll see that the use is limited, okay? We're ac- actually asking to open up that use. And the reason why we're looking to open up that use is because while on the first page we're reducing or changing the number of seats from forty to forty-nine, that's not sufficient to allow for some of the interest in restaurants and things that we've had in that area. Specifically, we have a project that's coming in, that's a fairly large restaurant that wants to go along Island Drive. They're restricted out of that district right now at this point because while they might be able to make the building fit on the property and they might be able to get the parking that they need for the building, the zoning district doesn't allow them to have the number of seats that they want to have to capitalize on the building. So we're asking for that to change from the limited use to the open use category. The open use category will then allow them, for a restaurant, to base the restaurant size on what the property will sustain. So as long as they can provide parking and as long as they can provide all of the setbacks, they would be able to bring forward a site plan to show you what they want to do. Right now, they can't get to that point because they can't even bring you a site plan beyond the forty seats that they're allowed right now because of the fact that they're only allowed limited use. So that's the rea- that's the genesis between these two things. And when you change it in the sti- the table A, which is a summary table, you also have to change it in the back of the book in the table five B, which is the same change that you see here, we're going from the limited use under, again, the building function to the open use. So that's the changes that you see here. It looks like I'm doing a whole lot, I'm really not. I'm changing a couple of, a, a couple of building functions here, it's just because this information is displayed differently, you see more changes than they, than what appears to be here, it looks like it really is more than it is. Um, but that's really what it, what the changes boil down to. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
I understand every word that you said.
Good, because if somebody gets it, then, then I, then I explained it well.
I have two questions.
Okay.
First, if it was the intent originally, when all this work was laid out, and obviously a tremendous amount of thought and process went into it, why wasn't it labeled restaurant fifty, forty-nine tables at that point? Why are we changing it now?
Well, conditions change over time. And as development pressures and interest in this district, right now, this district is, well, this area, uh, uh, at least Island Drive has experienced, and really not so much neglect, it's just not real interest in having any kind of development go there. So if you drive down Island Drive right now, you'll see three houses, um, two of which are in the process of being demolished, if they haven't already been demolished, and one house that's in the process of going that direction. You'll see some other development that is, it really needs, it really needs to be redeveloped. So the interest that we have seen in this area in the last two years has really been in the restaurant area. You don't have that use currently allowed for the size restaurants that are looking to go in there to go in this district. So while I appreciate the work that's gone in there, over time, the desire to use properties changes. And as those desires change, we need to, as a community, look at those uses and determine in this exact forum whether it's appropriate at that time to make those changes.
Okay, that was one question, thank you. Second question is, it sounded to me that you perhaps were making changes to accommodate a particular applicant. Shouldn't that applicant be here requesting that change?
Um, well, this is actually for several applicants, and you actually have an existing, um, restaurant that is already in that, um, zoning district that would need this accommodation as well to do any more changes to their building. So any future changes to the existing restaurant that is in this district will need that change as well because when it wa- when this district was created, it was created as a, it became a nonconformity, which in my opinion was inappropriate. You have to look at the balance of the, of the uses that you have in the district when you're adopting zoning code, and you have to look at what the future uses are, and you have to balance those. And without making this change, you're gonna make it very difficult for at least one business to continue to grow and change as times change.
And if I can piggyback on that, the reason that there's not a specific applicant, this is, you know, an, a legislative change that's gonna be put before the Board of Commissioners to actually change the entire zoning category, not just an individual applicant looking for like a variance or a change in a zoning category. So it's something that the city, and I don't want to presume to speak for the city, but that, that's something, this type of a change in general, something that the city wants to do on its own for the benefit of anyone who might want to develop in that area, not for a specific applicant to do that. Can I ask a question? Uh, using Rusty Bellies as an example, the forty seats is what's inside the restaurant, or does that include also their outdoor seating as well?
It would include all of their seating. So right now, as you can see, as you all are aware of, Rusty Bellies has far more than forty seats. So when this zoning district was adopted, it adopted, it was adopted in such a way that it didn't really accommodate the existing use that was there. So we need to balance the existing use against the need for that, that mix of both a marine and commercial district. And again, you have several businesses along here, including the existing Gulf Star that is looking at doing some kind, doing like a, a twin business where they'll have their business, which is a charter fishing business, which is a marine dependent business, and they want to be able to open, um, a small restaurant. You have another, another person who might be interested in opening a restaurant, they're just starting to come into our, into our, into our community and say, we would really like to explore this. So we're looking at this as, this is an opportunity to provide an incentive to, to see, seek redevelopment here. And there is area, this is one of the few areas that we have that there's actually a variable land here that they could develop cooperatively, um, a parking facility. So there's, there's opportunities here, um, that may not come about again, and this is the opportunity to, to try to spur on that redevelopment.
And it, it's still, I mean, it's just forty-nine total seats, it's not like forty-nine seats for some unit of square footage or acreage or anything like that, so.
It would be forty.
Still just, just forty-nine seats total?
There's two components, the forty-nine seats is for the limited use, that's changing the limited use section to limit, to, to limit that from forty seats to forty-nine. And then we're then making the secondary change under the retail category for the building function to open up the use within this district. So there, there's two components of this, but again, yes, you're, you're, you are right, you're going, going from forty to forty-nine seats. And what you should understand is the building occupancy is more than just seats, it's actually for the, it's actually based on the building occupancy. So if I have forty-nine seats, or I'm saying I'm having forty-nine seats, if I have employees that are involved, those emp- those seats are reduced by the number of employees that I have involved. So if I have, if I have, you know, six employees, then I'm gonna reduce the number of seats down to six. So it's, it, it's a order calculation, but a- again, it's what it does, that's how the Florida Building Code adjusts it. And I think that we should be calibrating the codes as much as possible to kind of meet one another so that we don't have issues where I'm looking at the Florida Building Code thing, I can have this, and then I go to the zoning code and it becomes an issue where it becomes, it becomes unfinancially infeasible. I mean, that might not seem like a lot, but to a restaurateur who is putting a lot of money and time and the equipment that they have to buy for the restaurant in there, that number of seats makes a huge difference in the profits that can turn, and how quickly they can make that, that a profitable venture. And that's something that we need to be sensitive to, too.
Can I ask another question? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I was just gonna say, I mean, from a restaurateur's standpoint, forty-nine is still tiny, yeah. It's, it's hard to make a go of it with something that's that small, much less forty.
My question, so are, are we effectively eliminating what was called the, I want to read it right? Because it's hard to see, the marine industrial area, we're, we're eliminating all the restrictions on it, so now it's gonna be the restaurant district?
No, we're opening the use from, for, under the retail category from limited to re- under the limited retail, or sorry, to the retail building function from limited to open, that's the difference. We're not changing any uses that are allowed there. All that we're doing is changing the building function. So under the retail section, when you have a retail use, instead of being limited to the limited section under the building function, you will now be able to use the open function, which allows for a different group of, a different sizing criteria.
Can I ask another question? Um, across the river is Captain Jack, is that a totally different zone? Across the river is Captain Jack's, is that a totally different zoning and is it not?
Captain Jack's is actually not even annexed into the city. It's in the county, it's an incorporated county.
Any other questions? Any public comments? Obviously not. Alright, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Ms. McCumber?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Terrapani?
Yes.
Mr. Coiner?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. Motion carries, so brings us down to staff comments, do we have any?
None at this time.
Have any board comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.